We had it because I had it on Friday.
I'll go check on her.
What?
I'll go check on her first, we won't have all of them gone.
Oh, you did? I've had this for awhile. We have a little glitch in the system, so we're sorry we're starting just a couple of minutes late. I will now call this study session of December 17th, 2018 to order. I don't see Pastor Scott Johnson here to give our invocation, so I'm going to call on our illustrious city attorney, Eric Cunningham. If he will please lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, I love the prophecy that was given so many hundred years before you came, for unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, and the Prince of Peace. Lord, we thank you for your government. We thank you that you came here to pay the price for our sins, so that we could be forgiven and that we could know you. We thank you for this Christmas time, Lord. We thank you for every blessing that you've given us. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity here to be part of this meeting, for each of the people involved in the audience, and for all of the employees, for the representatives here that have given up their time. We ask you to guide each one, each person that has a part. Give them your wisdom and let everything be done here, be to give you glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
We're now honored to have Boy Scout Troop 21 here. If they will come forward, they will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you all want to make any comments while you're here? Don't be shy. You can introduce yourselves. Tell us what batch you're wearing.
We're Troop 21 from St. Andrews Lutheran Church here in Cape Girardeau, and we're here tonight to work on citizenship in the community.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
We have a couple of presentations this evening, or a presentation and a recognition, I'll say. I'll do this presentation first, and it is a retirement celebration, so to speak. Yes, you're supposed to celebrate when you retire, are you not?
Yes.
Randall McClain, would you please come up? You sure you want to do this?
Yes, sir.
Randall began his employment with the City of Cape Girardeau on September 15th, 1976, with our solid waste division, in which he worked 19 years until he was transferred to the stormwater division. He is your manager member of that crew for the last 23 years, giving him 42 years of service to the city.
Wow.
Those 42 years are full of stories, including working three straight days in the blizzard of '79. Boy, I remember that. Which is so bad, you couldn't see five feet in front of your truck, or a different severe weather event which pulled him away from his planned 40th birthday party. His dedication to the city came before the party, and he responded without thinking twice. He has a great deal of knowledge from his many years of work at the city. If it pertains to city operations from 30 years ago, he probably has that info stored somewhere. He spent most of his life in service to our city, and when asked, he is very proud of that. We'd like to wish Randy all the best in the next chapter of his life, as he moves from a hardworking, loyal employee to a well-deserved retiree.
Thank you, sir.
I've got a plaque that says, "Appreciation and recognition of over 42 years of loyal and faithful service to the City of Cape Girardeau, presented this 17th day of December 2018, by the City of Cape Girardeau in honor of the retirement of Randall E. McClain, from service to the Public Works Department, 1976 to 2018."
Thank you very much.
Sure was. Forty-two years, a long time. We've got some other special guests this evening. I want to welcome President Carlos Vargas, Athletic Director Brady Bart, and most of all, Head Football Coach Tom Maitukewicz, the OBC Coach of the Year. We've asked them to be here tonight to commend them for their great football season, and for the impact it's had, not only on our university, but on our community and our whole region. Their unprecedented success of hosting the first-ever FCS playoff game was a great event, and it was a great event for the university, it was a great event for the community. I had a long talk with one of the people from Stony Brook, and they were really impressed with Cape Girardeau, with the hotel complex out where they stayed at the convention center with the downtown. When he figured out we didn't have Uber, we had something called Cargo, which would take him downtown, and they really enjoyed their stay here, and we were a great host, and maybe next time we'll win that one and then get another one. You're that Coach Tuke?
You're just like everyone else.
Not only was Coach Tuke the Coach of the Year in the OBC, he was also nominated for a National Coach of the Year Award. We also had several players receive OBC honors, and a lot of them received national accolades as well. We hope that this season is just the first of continued success, and we thank each of you for your part in not only raising our university to high standards, but exposing our community on the national scene, and your dedication and commitment is just unbelievable, and we thank you for it. I wanted to have you here to tell you that. So, this whole thing, even though we don't televise it anymore, it's on YouTube, so a lot of people are going to see it. Got that? But I want to thank each one of you. You have a few words of wisdom for us, don't you?
Guarantee you, President Vargas and Brady's nervous right now.
You know, I just, you know, obviously don't have anything prepared here, but, you know, I'm just, I love Cape Girardeau. I mean, my family and I both do, from the school systems. I'm a downtown guy. I try to walk every day down the river. There's just something about a river and a rhythm with your soul, and I just, I love this area. The people that really deserve the recognition unfortunately are not here, that's the players. You know, everybody sees ESPN, and they see a playoff win, but they don't see the 6:00 AM workouts and all the stuffs that they're doing before the sun even comes up, and that's why it's been one of the most rewarding seasons of my life, is because these people that have sacrificed so much finally got to reap some of that rewards, and obviously, you know, it's way bigger than a coach, but from the administration, the community, and I hope everybody take a piece of this season, because I truly believe it belongs to everybody. Everybody that's ever bought a ticket, everybody that's ever done a golf outing, or, you know, all of it, it's all of ours. Football's bigger than just, you know, a small sport. It's a community binder builder, and I, you know, I'm just thankful for everybody and appreciate the honor tonight on behalf of the football team.
I wore the wrong colors, right? Hey, Coach. I had an opportunity today to talk to somebody that's pretty close to the team, been as close to the team. He said something I thought that was worth saying tonight. He said the transformation that he has watched, as you've made young men out of boys in this process, would have been worth it if you won zero games. And I think that's pretty big. We'll move into communication and reports. Any communication from any council people? Yeah. Don't everybody speak at once.
Oh, I just wanted to kind of express my personal thanks, and the thanks of those in my neighborhood for the quick and hard work of Public Works and Alliance for the water main break we had in my neighborhood last week. I got a call about 3 o'clock that there was, you know, barely any water in the neighborhood, and by the time I got home, I had a meeting. By the time I got home at 5:30, water was on and working perfectly. So, thanks to all at Public Works and Alliance.
They do a good job.
Yes, sir.
Nobody else?
Last week I was on a cruise. I had occasion to stop in Havana, Cuba. I want to tell you folks, you ought to be glad to be in the United States of America. Because my observations of the common person in downtown Old Havana, that civilization basically came to a halt in 1959. It hasn't improved much. So, God bless America.
Nobody else? I guess it's my turn.
Yeah.
Not a lot happening now with Christmas almost upon us. I did attend the Advisory Council for United Way this week, and they basically gave a report of a survey that they did about what needs there are in Cape Girardeau, and how United Way can better meet those needs, and work with the agencies here in town to do that, whether they need to change the way they work or whatnot. One good thing that came out of that meeting is there's a United Way in the Jeff City, Columbia area, that has a meeting once a month called the Unmet Needs Meeting, where different agencies get together and they talk about the critical things that are happening at that moment that somebody might need, and whether it's a young mother with two kids who's in dire need of someplace to stay, or whether it's somebody else in some other situation, and they get together and solve that problem immediately. And it's kind of a neat thing, I think, that would help our local get out of way, and I hope the Board adopts that policy. We have, not much else has happened since the last meeting. We have a magnet meeting in the morning, followed by a meeting with legislators to discuss the wayfair decision and use tax, and how legislatively they might be able to help all the cities around the state here in that same boat. We've got an aquatics meeting Wednesday, simple meeting Wednesday, and after that's just kind of holiday season. So, while I had this informal moment, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and hope everybody has a very pleasant holiday season, and get to enjoy your families, and take some time off. So, Merry Christmas. Scott?
Just want to hand out, I think, our 2018 draft accomplishment list. At this time of year, we usually take time to look back and see some of our major accomplishments, and staff has done that, and that gives you a start of that. Then we also have kind of the priorities for 2019 going forward, and so I just wanted to share that with you. And, yeah, really, it's, you know, like I said, it's a draft. You're going to see something missing on there that you think needs to be either an accomplishment or a priority for the next year. Again, this was kind of trying to be at the 10,000 level, not at the, not in the weeds, but, you know, let us know, and we'll make those adjustments going forward.
Gil says turn your microphone on.
Now that I'm done, Gil, I'll turn my microphone on. I apologize.
We all got your email last time, so we turned our microphone on down here, Stacy.
Any other communications and reports? If not, we'll move into the Planning and Zoning Commission Report. He came ready with his Red Hawks vest on, didn't he?
This is the coach look, as my wife and I, sweater vest, and I didn't know that we had this in the house. It was rather, Mr. Glenn has a previous event with school boards unable to be here, so I'm filling in for him. It was rather routine meeting at the last planning and zoning. Only one zoning request, a couple signed requests. There's a driveway one, some others I'll go through real quickly. The only zoning request was moving from R1 to a C2, and that is the section for Southeast Health between Mount Auburn and Silver Springs Road. Part of that request and everything adjoining that is currently C2. They need it rezoned as part of the behavioral care unit. They're looking at doing as well as something that they're trying to consider doing with the VA. And so, that did pass. Mr. Glenn abstained, but it did pass unanimously, and that will be on your agenda on January 7th for first reading. That was the only zoning request that was for us. A special use permit, this was made by Derek and Carla Cornelius for a billboard on their property. It's currently an M1 district. Again, this was at 3849 Business Park Place. That passed unanimously. No one spoke against that. A special use permit as well for 450 Seamer's Drive. This is the old Love City here. There is a car mart, a car repair, auto repaired space that's looking to go into that, so they requested a special use permit. That passed, again, eight in favor, no extensions, no against, no one was opposed to that. That will also be on your January 7th council agenda, as will the business park one as well. I apologize. Two wall sign exemptions, pretty standard. First one was coast-to-coast signs, looking to do something on the Yummy Buffett, the old Great Wall building. They want something that would be on the west side of that building. Very consistent with what we've done in the past, eight in support of that one as well. Another one on 3451 William Street, this is the car wash up near Walmart, looking to do something on the east side of that building. Again, eight in favor, no one spoke against, no extension, no opposition. And then, we did have a request for a driveway exemption. This is in the Walden Park Properties. The code has been updated since the time he started the building, and he needed an exemption for the driveway sizes to keep that consistent with what he has in the rest of the properties. Well in line with what we've approved in the past, eight in favor, no problems. And then there were two subdivision plaits that were approved. First one, the Austin subdivision. This is at 1730 Oakley Drive, converting two lots into one. Again, no issues with that one. Mr. Doughty abstaining, but I was seven in support of that. And then Blatner Meadows, this was on Cloverdale Ranch Drive, converting two lots into one. Again, no concerns with that one. That one passed eight as well as eight in favor. And then we did welcome Derek Jackson and Ed Thompson to the commission for their first meeting and last go-around.
Good. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thanks, Bruce.
I do want to make one plug. Carol and Ryan are great to work with, just for the sake of putting it on the record.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
He wasn't talking about me, right?
Are there any appearances this evening for any item not listed on the agenda? Any appearances for any item not on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move into Agenda Review.
All right, we have no appearances, or excuse me, no public carings tonight, and then no special appearances. The consent agenda consists of items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are the second and third readings of those items. Number 2 is the telecom tower on West End Boulevard. 3 is the change regarding recreational vehicles and people using those in places, in subdivisions such. This specifies where they need to be. 4 is the reciprocacy for the trade license. 5 is for the easement for the Arena Park Strange project, and 6 is the record plat on the Crow subdivision, which is out at the Legends Development. Number 7 is a resolution regarding Del Hoozy. They would like to put up decorative signs in brackets for their street name signs. So, this just says that they can do that, and we have an LNI for that. And then number 8 is a release of lien at 927 Bloomfield Road. So, this is a project where we help people do improvements on their home, and then there's a lien on their home until they complete their obligations. They've completed their obligations, and so we can remove that lien. Number 9 is the final payment for the American Ramp Company. So, this is the skateboard park at Arena Park. There is work yet to do out there, but we're doing that with staff. The flat work and parking lot will be done with staff, so this is the release of the final payment for the work done. It's getting an awful lot of use out there, Julia. It's, I remember the first day it was available, it was people all over the place. They were climbing over, but I think they've got it where they can get to it now. So, they'll be asking for lights pretty soon. Number 10 is the rejecting of all bids for the, this is for the restroom and room to hold the pump and equipment for the splash pad at Capahol Park. It came in more than double our engineer's estimate, only had one bid, so we're going to rebid that. We think we can also rebid it because it came in below 75,000. We can rebid it without prevailing wage, so we think that'll bring it down. Also do some more outreach and try to get more bids. We have two items that we did remove from the consent agenda because it felt like you might want to discuss those a little more. The first one is the record plat for Southeast Hospital Nursing, the subdivision. So, this is, they wanted to change the title on this. They took Missouri out and added subdivision at the end, so we'll need to have a motion to amend this ordinance, and then a motion, after that is approved, then we'll have a motion to approve. So, it's really just a title change. Number 12 is the ordinance for the delivery of liquor license, delivery of alcohol, and the second and third reading of that. I know last time we had a discussion about it, and wanted to offer more time for discussion, if you wish. Do you know if you want to do it now or later?
Do it later when it comes up.
Okay. We'll do it when it comes up. Yeah. New ordinances. We have the permanent drainage easement on 1234 South Pacific. This is for the Hackberry Sidewalk Extension. There's a, under our sidewalk gap program, this is, there's a gap out there, so this connects that and the Keller property. We need a drainage easement in order to put a pipe through there, in order to make that sidewalk extension. Then we have, 14 is the permanent drainage easement for 321 Optimus Drive. This is the Arena Creek Box Culvert Project, again, the same as before, just a different owner, a different piece of the property for that drainage easement. Number 15 is an agreement with Missouri Highland Transportation Commission for the installation of Purple Heart signage at our, some of our city limit signs. Then number 16. 16 is an emergency reading of this ordinance, so it will be read all three times. It is for the general warranty deed for Amerigo Weather Investments. This is the purchase of a parking lot property at 116 North Spanish Street. So, this is both the first, second, and third reading. It will take a majority, a super majority, if you will, so it will be all, all five votes will be needed to pass this under the emergency ordinance. It is necessary to get the, to purchase the property prior to the end of the year, which is the desire of the property owner at this existing price. So, that makes it eligible for the emergency reading. 17, 18, and 19 are all record plaits. 17 is taking two to one, two lots to one. It's out on Whispering Oaks. Talked about it earlier, for the Blatner Meadows subdivision. 18 is a record plat at AB Commercial Properties. This is in that car wash area there on William, just west of Walmart. That's a re-subdivision, or it's two to two, so they're just kind of re-putting the lines in there. And then 19 is a record plat for Austin subdivision. This is a two to one. This is out off of Bertling, north of Bertling on, I can't remember the name of the street, but there's a curb that goes around the street, and there's a house sitting there, and they want to, they want to combine those into one lot. Again, it was passed by planning and zoning. Any questions on any of those ordinances? We have one appointment tonight. It's the Cape Girardeau Area Magnet Board of Directors. As soon as we reappointment of the mayor and Councilman Gard, end of the year, when that term expires, so it's a reappointment of those. That'll be all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now go into regular session. I'll call that session to order, and we'll have pro-call, please.
Mr. Essex?
Here.
Mayor Fox?
Here.
Mr. Gard?
Absent.
Mr. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kinder?
Here.
Ms. Moore? And Mr. Preston?
Here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made in second. Any discussion? If not, hold us in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening. Is there anybody here wishing to make an appearance for an item that is listed on the agenda this evening? Anybody wishing to make an appearance for an item listed on the agenda? Don't everybody jump up at once. If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Eric.
Order 18-169, ordinance granting a special use permit to Sprint Selective Solutions LLC in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a telecommunication tower at 1157 South Western Boulevard in the City of County Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance granting special use permit to Sprint Selective Solutions LLC in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a telecommunication tower at 1157 South Western Boulevard in the City of County Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Or 18-170, an ordinance amending chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding recreational vehicles. An ordinance amending chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding recreational vehicles. Or 18-171, an ordinance amending chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances, Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding renewal period and reciprocity of trade license. An ordinance amending chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances, Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding renewal period and reciprocity of trade licenses. Or 18-172, an ordinance accepting a permanent drainage easement for 439 Optimus Drive from Billy Joe Bragg and Carol Ann Bragg in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Orders accepting a permanent drainage easement for 439 Optimus Drive from Billy Joe Bragg and Carol Ann Bragg in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Or 18-173, an ordinance proving record plat of Crowe subdivision. An ordinance proving record plat of Crowe subdivision. Over 18-175, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with the ED Development LLC and Del Hoozy LLC for installation of decorative street sign brackets and street signs in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Or 18-176, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a release of lien for property located at 927 Bloomfield Road under the Community Development Block Grant Program in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Thank you, Eric. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two items removed. Bill number 18-165, an ordinance approving a record plat of Southeast Hospital Nursing subdivision. An ordinance approving the record plat of Southeast Hospital Nursing subdivision. I will entertain a motion to amend this due to the title change Southeast Hospital.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-174, an ordinance amending chapter 5 of the Code and ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding liquor license. An ordinance amending chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding liquor licenses. We do need to move to adopt the amended resolution.
On the previous.
The previous motion, the previous resolution, bill number 18-165.
So moved.
Motion by Stacy. Second by Ryan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric. I'm surprised Eric didn't jump up and say, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Saw Gail whisper just here over there.
Is that what it was? Okay. Back to 18-174.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm coming at this, this whole thing from just the perspective of a parent. I don't have, you know, business background and whatnot. So it's, with this issue, it's taken me maybe too long, I don't know, but too long to figure out exactly what questions I have, but I do have more questions. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it further tonight. I know we dealt with it two weeks ago. And we've been talking about it a long time. I have some kind of background, a few background questions and then some specific questions about, about this. If Scott, perhaps you or Eric could, could just give me a brief, there's been an issue of discussing local delivery companies as, as well as versus, you know, retail liquor sales and deliveries from those establishments. Is that, if you could just please briefly kind of cover the difference in the, in the licensing or?
I'll give a shot at it and then let Eric clean up what I missed. Well, somebody that has a license to, to sell liquor by the drink or, or packaged liquor, either one, you know, has that license to do that. Within that license is also the ability to deliver. So they, so they have that license and ability and they have to, they're, they're subject to all penalties and everything regarding doing that.
And that, that's covered by local and state.
Yes.
Licensing.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So that, that was, I could see what I was trying to get at.
Yes.
The, the delivery aspect is already in that.
Yeah.
Because there's been a question about, you know, does a grocery store here or whatever, do they need this delivery?
No, they don't because many of them have already been doing that under that for years and, and it is covered. The, the caveat that happened when Cargo came was that they were a delivery only. They did not ever, you know, they, they don't have a, you know, they didn't have a license to sell. And so that was the, the question is, we wanted to have a license so that with all of alcohol, that's kind of the best enforcer is the ability to take that license away in times when we've had people that were outside or selling to minors. We then either suspend it or revoke it and that is what gets them to comply.
So yeah, I think just in thinking about that compliance and we talked two weeks ago, you know, about the possibility of catching, you know.
Sure. Non-compliance checks.
Compliance checks or sting operations or what have you. It is just, it made me wonder if there's something on the front end we should be doing more to, to be clear to these delivery companies. We, we have the benefit of a, of a company already here who has, seems to me, has, has been extremely thorough. And I, I wondered if perhaps we were assuming, or maybe I was assuming, you know, that other companies would follow right along with that model, but it, it occurred to me, well, maybe not. And so maybe we should, because that adds cost and that adds complication and.
Sure. If you, if you have, if you have less specific regulation, then maybe they, they interpret how they're going to make sure that they only sell to people who are of age. There, there's some leeway to, to allow that.
Yeah. And, and it seemed like, I'm sorry.
I think Eric got something to add.
The, our city ordinance and the state law requires that anybody that is delivering in that way be somebody that is 21 years of age or older. It already requires that of anybody that is going to be making a delivery. And it already requires that anybody that would be receiving it has to be 21 years of age and, and older. So, so that requirement is, is already on the books for anybody conducting those activities.
Like at a restaurant, you can't have a server delivering, under 21, delivering a.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, so it seemed like our, our conversation last time revolved around, oh, well, we are already, there are already these things in place. Scott, you and I talked a little bit further about the issue of, what's a good word for Record keeping, auditing. I, I wondered if that would add just more teeth to, well, that, that upfront responsibility as well as perhaps to our, to our police department or city or whatever in terms of stronger enforcement or, if, if, if it seemed like a problem was arising.
And, and it is prescriptive in saying you have to have records, you have to keep them and then we have, the city has the ability to come back and audit you.
But there's nothing, nothing about that in, in what's on the table.
In what's on the table tonight, but we did have the, we did have the portion that was, that we, that we showed earlier that did have, I believe in, is that section D?
About the auditing or the record keeping?
Licensee shall keep adequate books and records of verification required by this article for a period of five years from the date of those deliveries, which records shall be open to inspection and copying at any time the man or the chief of police is designated. Records required by this section shall include the name, address of the retail business from which the license, the licensee and the delivery person obtained the intoxicated liquor for delivery, the date, time, and place of the transfer, delivery person, the date and time and the place of the delivery to the customer, and all the financial records relating to the transaction. So that, that is what we were saying could be required. And you could amend that to add that if that was what, what the council wished.
Is that something from a enforcement perspective would, would be helpful or anybody?
Wes, are you, I know you're not, I know you're not an auditor, but.
No. Well, it's, I don't know, I don't have any knowledge about what, you know, what would have to happen or what's needed to.
So my microphone is not working, but I'll speak up. I mean, we do regular compliance checks with, with bars and people who deliver and serve alcohol anyway. That's not going to change. We're going to still.
There's a program already in place.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we do them sometimes by ourselves. We do them sometimes in conjunction with state liquor control. And in fact, the state liquor control agents actually have a desk in our office, so they're down quite a bit working with us on, on different things like this.
And so you would, you could, you would anticipate just whatever delivery companies are out there, you would just bring them into that.
Yes.
Program. Something about the, the record keeping though, would that be part of that process or helpful?
Going, actually going into a business and asking to review their records?
Well, especially if you are perhaps fearful there's a problem with that delivery company.
Well, if we believe that there was a problem, we would probably do a controlled buy from them and then refer that to the prosecutor for prosecution.
I see. Okay.
But we don't, we don't actually go in and audit people's business records. That's not something that we do.
Gotcha.
I don't know about our bill, the ability of a prosecutor, Eric, you might may or may not, or the prosecutor's here.
I see a prosecutor in the back.
To, to act, take action from records, would that be, would that be a, something that a prosecutor would normally be able to do or, or the lack thereof?
Well, of course, any additional evidence can always be used in a, in a prosecution. The question would be whether somebody felt that the evidence that they had was sufficient to prove the, the offenses that they were going after. And that's really the issue that you guys would be discussing tonight and, and whether the police department would want any more records.
That would be my question is if the police department doesn't do that, that's not a function. Who would do that then? If, if this was put into the ordinance, who would do that work? Who would do the auditing?
I would, I assume we would either, if it needed an audit function, I assume we would ask them for the records and then we would review them and that would be done in conjunction.
Yeah. I mean, unless the statute specifically states that we have the authority to go in there and review their records, we could subpoena their records or serve a search warrant on their business. Those would be.
Well, is, is anything that, in this ordinance though, requiring a, a delivery company to have any records? I mean.
But I'm, but I'm not sure what records we, they would have in their business that we would need to see. I mean, if they've sold alcohol to somebody that's underage and we have that as an on view offense, there's really not a record that we need to go find.
Right. You're talking about your police act, you know, your.
Yes.
Sting operation or whatever. Yeah.
I guess it would just be in a, you'd think it would be a record in the affirmative. You wouldn't think that they would keep an ID of someone that was 19 and say, here.
Sixteen year old.
Yeah. So I assume it would be a, an affirmative in the record where they would have the records where they took a picture of or scanned a, an ID of a person that they, that took the delivery. I, I don't know.
I would guess that the most likely offense you would find is that they had done a compliance check for a delivery and found out that the company had not kept a record of it as opposed to, as you said, finding that somebody was, was underaged and, and they kept a record of the fact that their driver had, had given it to somebody underage. I think you're probably more likely to find that somebody didn't keep.
Didn't keep a record.
Sure. And that, but that's not a problem.
No, it's, it is what it is.
Right. I'm just, I'm trying to imagine the worst case scenario, which is all of a sudden, a lot of, lot of folks with a car and a Twitter sign, you know, being open for business and then driving all over.
I think, I think usually our, our officers have a pretty good idea of, of new, or the.
Yeah. Word gets around pretty.
Word on the street that you can get liquor, you can get things here and that's.
Honestly, that's a little bit of a plug for our SRO program because we've got those officers that are in the schools and they usually are some of our best sources of intelligence because they hear what's going on in the schools where all the underage kids are.
And what would the process be of obtaining this license for a business, the same as obtaining a liquor license from, just to sell by the drink or package?
So there's a, there's a new category called delivery.
So they would have to be subjected to the same screening process upfront?
We've, we've, it feels, it seems like we talked about last time, being concerned, it seemed like many of us had concerns about overregulating or, or not, trying not to be so specific in, in telling businesses exactly how they need to do this. Just in reading this, other proposed ordinance over and over, it, it seemed to me that what's spelled out here more are goals, not necessarily specific business practices that they have to do. In other words, cargo, for example, has very specific ways they do, they accomplish these things, but there's nothing here that says to another business, you have to accomplish those things exactly the same way. It's simply rather, you will verify, for example, the age. And it doesn't, it doesn't say how. I mean, you could.
But is it not implicit in the regular ordinance that they have to be 21, that they're going to, I, I'm just.
Yes. In that example.
Playing devil's advocate.
Yes. Yes.
The question is, do we want to be more specific? Because when we, when we worked with Cargo developing this, they gave us their, their business practices and what they use. And the other alternative was the resolution we came up with, which was less restrictive in the practices they use to achieve that goal. And.
Which is on the table tonight. It's, I mean.
Which is on the table tonight.
It's, it's basically.
That's what we're, that's what we're discussing. The question is, do we want to amend that to make it more restrictive in that it amends the business practices that they will use to achieve that goal?
And the, the, the most important step for, for me and I think staff is that we have a license, whether it's the more restrictive or the less restrictive, we're fine with either, but we want them to have a license because that is the stick, if you will, to make sure that, that they comply.
Right.
And, and that's the most important part, we believe. Now then, in the, in the future, we can always, we can always make adjustments. What was it, two, three years ago, previously, people could come into a bar less than 21 that it couldn't be served. Well, in our, in the compliance checks that the police did, they were, you know, people would shift drinks around and they're out all this and so it was a real problem. And so they, they, they thought that was a problem, that they needed to be more restrictive. So they, we developed additional, that said over a certain percentage alcohol sales, you cannot allow people under 21 in, in the facility, in the, in the facility. So that was a, I think also at the time we did drink specials that were, that were overly, that led to binge drinking and things. So there were, there were things that were done then that really addressed existing problems that we were having on, with the existing structure. And I would say this is the same. If we find that we have new delivery systems that come in and they're not doing, you know, they're, they're not, we need something more restrictive, then we would certainly come you know, they're, they're not, we need something more restrictive, then we would certainly come back to you and say, we need something more restrictive. We just don't know what that looks like right now. We're just guessing. But, but again, I think we're fine with either, either proposal.
The important thing is that they have a license.
Yes.
I mean, you don't want anybody going out just starting a business and delivering liquor to college students or somebody else who are underage and.
Not any way of controlling it.
We have no way of controlling it. This way, at least we have a way to control it. And like you said, if we find out that there are issues that have arisen, then we could always come back and put more teeth in this and change the way the businesses practice what they do.
It just, it seems, I think the only way we control it with, with what's on the table is we're gonna, we gotta catch ya.
Right.
Right.
But that's true with any ordinance.
And it's true of all of our liquor. We don't have another way of doing all of our, our liquor control.
One other question in this other proposal, there was talk of completing an alcohol education program. Is that already something that exists with retail or?
Yeah, we require that the bars send their servers through what's called a server training. And so they, they all do that now.
Okay.
And Cargo, I believe, does that as well with their drivers.
I believe so. What, how long is that? What is the?
I think it's a four hour training, if I remember correctly.
Okay, it's not a.
Yeah, it's not.
Four week or, okay. I would personally probably be more comfortable with a little more teeth to our ordinance, but I may be the only one that feels that way, so.
And it doesn't make me any difference if the council wants to put more teeth in it and make it more restrictive and require that they go through a training program and do, I mean, Cargo had a list of things that they do and we had those in the other, you know, the other ordinance. I would have no problem doing that if the council felt like that that's what we wanted to do. Because they worked hard with the city in developing this and, and I don't want to just take pieces of it out because, you know, then they're going to wonder, well, why'd you pick this and not this? What was wrong with that practice? What was wrong with this practice?
It seems like the other proposal has several additional things and it also kind of states on paper some things that are already covered in terms of.
Yeah, 21, you had to be 21 to be served or have delivery too. Those are things that are covered, but they are now, in this, are specifically under delivery.
I might point out, part of the reason the draft that is in front of the council tonight is as simple as it is, is that we have heard from Cargo quite a number of times that the city of Cape Girardeau was presenting too many regulations and it was not business friendly. And so our goal was to try to make an ordinance that had very few regulations and had a very small fine. And that's part of the reason the draft that is in front of you is as it is.
That's another way of looking at it.
Yeah, Mike, I just wonder if on this issue, we should be as hands off as this perhaps is. That's my biggest question.
I just wanted to toss in there, I can see it both ways. I mean, I can definitely see, I, I think the, the low amounts of regulation argument is really good, especially for startup incubator style environment. But then I also completely understand with, with what you're saying about teeth. I, I do think though, you know, whenever it comes down to having, kind of, we can always work with this as this business continues to grow and as these opportunities continue to grow. We've talked a couple of times about you just never know what the economy is going to present next as the next big idea. And so it, it might be sort of interesting to start on sort of a low regulation level and as we see fit in the future, sort of tackle future things as they come. So that's kind of my thought on it is just maybe give it some time and then we'll, we'll sort of see what amendments need to be made in the future.
Question is, do we want to amend it tonight or do we want to look at this and revisit? Look at it in a year and see what's happened with any new businesses and, and what their business practices are and see if there's been any violations and see whether we need to put more teeth in it.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I think I agree with what Dan said and I also understand what Stacy's saying that we need to put more teeth in it, but the violators are going to violate whether the teeth are there or not. And I'm not sure that, I don't know that adding the regulation would, I mean, we're, the violations are going to happen whether the more stringent regulations are there or not. So I don't know that I'm opposed to add to, to the increased regulations. My question is, does the, how much staff time is added to imposing these regulations? Enforcement and, you know, it's a cheap license to get and what's the cost going to be to imposing all of these regulations? Do we know what that is?
If I could just jump in real quick, it seems like the only addition would be a four hour education, alcohol education.
But that's not our staff time.
Right. What I'm asking about though is some of the specific regulations around record keeping and going in and and staff time to audit records and things like that.
Well, only if there, only if there was.
Our staff does not routinely audit business practices and business records.
If, this is stating that the licensee is required to keep the books and records. Presumably, if, if a problem came up, those records would be there as data to. I can't even imagine how that.
So how often we would do that, you know, I don't.
Depending on if they violated the law. If they violate the law, then you're going to look at those.
We do have, I believe Steph said that we do have a person that has inquired regarding delivery. And so there is potentially another company out there that is looking at that. So, I mean, you know, it might be that we would, we would do an audit. If, if, if we felt like a need to do it, then we'll, we'll take the time necessary. I mean, it's important to us to, to, to not have sales to myers, so.
No, I agree. I was just trying to get a sense of.
As far as us, I don't, I don't think the difference is, is huge. It's just, it's more specific. It gives us another avenue. And then, yes, we have some training, but we're already doing the training and working with.
I guess what I was trying to get a sense of is, is do, is the staff in place to enforce those? But if there aren't a lot of extra things that have to be enforced as far as staff time goes, then I guess it's a moot point.
We're, we're, Steph and I are fine with either, either path.
I would move then that we amend the ordinance to include, well, what, how do you want to call this? I mean, what, how would I, how would I say this?
Cargo's original recommendation?
It's the more restrictive, to include the restrictions noted.
New section five dash 15, is that what this is called or, anyway?
That, that's vice, Eric, okay.
Okay, we've got a motion to amend this and add the other sections that were suggested by Cargo, really.
Yep, those are the ones that we received from them and, and put into an ordinance.
Okay, can I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ryan. Any further discussion?
I want to be clear, just because he said, suggested about it, there were other things that Cargo did talk about, like pulling in the postal service and things like that that we were not able to do. And so it does not include those things.
We did not include those things.
And it does not include, for instance, Schnucks who's already doing it in delivery under, and that have, that have a license to sell. It doesn't include bringing them into that. Just want to be clear that that's.
Delivery only.
This would be a person applying for a delivery only license.
Delivery only license.
And, and just so I'm clear, this is, tell me if I'm not reading this correctly, but there are many ways to go about accomplishing what is stated here. I mean, you conceivably could, could just, you know, have a ledger and a pen and accomplish this. I mean, Cargo has a pretty sophisticated way of doing things already, but this is not.
I assume.
This is not telling any new business that they have to do it like that.
Well, they have to follow the ordinance, but they don't. It doesn't tell them they have to necessarily do it digitally.
Right. I mean, there's, there's.
Record keeping.
Right. I just, yeah.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Takes four to pass it.
Aye.
I said aye, that's three.
Aye.
I said aye.
Okay, amendment fails. We now have before us the original ordinance that has been read second and third. All those in favor of the original ordinance signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances, bill number 18 dash 177, an ordinance accepting a permanent drainage adjustment for 1234 South Pacific. From Keller Property Investments LLC in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill number 18 dash 178, an ordinance accepting a permanent drainage adjustment for 321 Optimus Drive and Canyon Construction and Development LLC for the Arine Creek Box Culvert Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Seconded by Stacy. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18 dash 179, an ordinance authorizing the city manager executing agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the installation of Purple Heart signage in Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
Motion by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? Glad to see this finally happen.
Oh, didn't it?
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18 dash 180, an order accepting a general warranty deed from Meriwether Investments for property located at 116 North Spanish Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a general warranty deed from Meriwether Investments for property located at 116 North Spanish Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a general warranty deed from Meriwether Investments for property located at 116 North Spanish Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Dan. Seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? I'll say this will give us some much needed additional parking in downtown Cape Girardeau. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18 dash 181, an ordinance approving the record plat of Blotner Meadows Subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Seconded by Stacy. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18 dash 182, an ordinance approving the record plat of AB Commercial Properties Subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18 dash 183, an ordinance approving record plat of Austin Subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Stacy.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two appointments or reappointments to the Cape Girardeau Area Magnet Board's directors, which were myself and Councilman Gar. Again, motion. Motion by Dan.
Second.
Seconded by Stacy. I don't think you guys are going to discuss it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There is no other business I know of. I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by Victor, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Merry, merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas. See you next year.